Okay, we'll call the beating to order. Ask that you stand to salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where my nation under God is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence for retired fire chief Wallace Hap How, who's passed away Saturday. His wake will be held Thursday at Blanchard's Funeral Home from four to seven in his funeral Friday at 11:00 a.m. at the United Church of Christ. Also for former Call Firefighter George Roberts and former SoCal Board of Appeals member James Counter. Thank you. Before we get going, just a couple of announcements. One, on April 4th at the Senior Center at 11:30 a.m., the Board of Selectmen is hosting a retiree appreciation luncheon for all employees formerly who worked in the town of Abington and have retired, both from the town side and the school side. We have been accepting private donations for that, and later on on the agenda, we'll be setting up a gift account under the provisions of Chapter 44 under the general laws, which would allow us to receive donations and expend it subject to audit. Secondly, the fire DPW station is proceeding along. General bids will be due back on April 2nd, and the grant will have a perhaps maybe a groundbreaking sometime during the summer. The DPW is going to be relocating its operation to the North School, and I believe either today or tomorrow, letters will be going out to the neighbors informing them of that. The DPW will begin moving some of their material up to the site of the North School while the current DPW facility is demolished and a new facility is constructed. Just a reminder, pardon me, that on Saturday, January 25th, is an election for the question as to whether we'd have a new vocational high school. It's going to be held in the eight communities, and the superintendent from Socio-Votec is here. He'll explain further on that. The polls are open from nine to five. The center school bids due back on January 29th, and we're hopeful that when the bids come back, we'll have a presentation before the Board of Selectmen and a public hearing on whatever is proposed at that point. And lastly, the town report, it's from the various departments, are due back to the town manager on January 31st. I've been kind of insistent that this year, we want to upgrade the town report. It's actually a historical document, and you'll find out later on tonight, a reason that I want this accomplished is that a lot of departments, I want to make sure we include as much as possible in there, you know, perhaps pitches too, because it becomes a snapshot in time of what has happened in town, and believe it or not, people do go back and research it from that point. Is there any other announcements from members of the board?
What about early voting for the Votec?
I believe they're available now in the town clerk's office.
No.
Absentee.
Absentee.
Yeah.
Absentee voting.
Okay. With that said, Superintendent Tom Hickey from Socio Regional, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update. We started this MSBA process in early 2022, and you've been kind enough to have me come back periodically, sometimes through the budget season, and sometimes because we've reached certain milestones. So as you said, Mr. Chair, at the beginning, all paths lead to this special district election, which is on Saturday, January 25th. It's a district-wide election, which means that the determination of whether the project is successful depends on the aggregate or cumulative vote of all the voters from our nine communities. The latest information goes back, it goes back several months, but our ultimate design, which you can find on our project website, southshoretechproject.com, is the construction of a new school behind our current school on the ball fields in the back. And the school would be designed, the 900 is a delta of about 215, and so while we will not get to that enrollment overnight because of limitations with operating budgets, it does address the fact that we have a growing waiting list. We have over 425 applications right now for 180 seats in the ninth grade class, 78 applications from Abington for what is currently 18 available seats. So the demand is there from our communities. We have appreciated the support up to this point. We're proud of the fact that the design, we think, is the most cost-effective model for the next 50 or 60 years. I appreciate the town manager's help in getting the word out through his town manager corner reports as well. We're also excited that this design will include the addition of a new plumbing program and a veterinary science program. The cost. We project that the cost at the local level will be to split about $162 million between nine towns. We have a tax impact link on our project website. So if you go to the project website, southshoretechproject.com, you'll see tax impacts at the top, and there is a PDF for each of our communities, and we show folks a couple different ways of borrowing money. To summarize it briefly, in fiscal '29 or fiscal '30, when the project would wrap up and all of the project would be bonded, we see a range for the average assessed home in Abington of being at a level debt payment model, $231 a year, or at a more aggressive level principal payment model of upwards of $287. The district does not make any borrowing decisions. We would involve all of our communities, but we feel there's an obligation to at least put us in a reasonable ballpark. The projection includes an enrollment projection as well, which puts Abington at about 14%. So to put it a different way, about 14% of the cost of this $162 million would be a portion to Abington. We recently adjusted our regional agreement, so that debt share will adjust over time using a four-year rolling average. So if enrollment does decline, debt share would decline with it as well. But I've tried to use more robust numbers and not lowball any of the numbers based on what we've seen in terms of student interest, student application interest, and ultimate placement in the school. So at this point, Mr. Chair, that's, I think, the high-level summary of where we are with a few weeks to go before this election.
What would be the total, pardon me, the total obligation for the town if it were to pass?
If we looked at, I'd give you a range, so if we look at a level debt versus level principal. If we were to borrow on a level principal model, I actually can, I'll give you a little more specific. A level principal model would have a high watermark of 1.6 million starting in 2029. So that would be the aggregate amount.
What's the total amount, the total, not principal, what's the total principal amount for Abington based on if it's approved?
I don't have total principal, but I would say principal and interest, 35.5 million if it were borrowed using level principal payments, or 37.6 million if it were borrowed using level debt payments.
Okay, and the 35.5 is roughly on the average home, 200 and...
The 35.5 would be the higher of the two numbers, which would be the 287.
287.
The level debt payments, which of course is cheaper upfront, but more interest over 30 years, would be the 231.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the members of the board in regards to it?
No, I think if people are interested, the website is really helpful, the design's great, the thought process that's gone behind this, if you have questions, it's available on the site. I recommend everybody just do their research before they make decisions, but you know, this is something that needs this community, love your adding more programs, so thank you.
Thanks, Ad. My direct number is 781-766-4002, if anyone would prefer a direct phone call on information, or my email is thickie@ssvotec.org.
Thanks. I think, I mean, clearly, it's no secret, I was a graduate of VOTEC, a big supporter of vocational education, but I'm also retired and on a fixed income. And I think the average person is going to have to weigh for themselves. Clearly, do we need it? I think in my mind, there's no question the school is needed. The question becomes, okay, the individual voter is going to have to decide how does that fit within their affordability complex. The only thing that I will say specifically to the people of Abington is that if you come out and vote on January 25th, and you're in favor of it, and in the aggregate, if the nine communities, I keep forgetting there was one more added.
March was added, yes.
If the aggregate vote is yes, it doesn't matter whether, if Abington were to vote no, and the other communities vote yes, and in the aggregate, it's still yes, Abington is still on the hook for the money. As you can imagine, the reason I ask, what is the principal and interest, because at 35 and a half million, there's no way we can do that within the operating budget without a debt exclusion. So the question for Abington is if this passes in the aggregate, at town meeting, we will be coming, asking to debt exclude the amount, and pick the number, either 35.5 or 37.6, and then it'll have to go on the town election ballot as well. And it'd have to be a positive vote on those two. If we don't get a positive vote on that, I don't know what we're going to do, quite frankly. To your point, you would end up, it'd be FY '30 by the time it's all put together?
That's right. These higher annual numbers that I'm quoting you would be, we could push it to FY '30 based on when, so we would, we would do interest-only payments for '26, '27, '28. Those would be smaller numbers, and the tax impact PDF would show that to scale. But if we're going to the high-water mark, on a reasonable path, we would say '29. But if we consult with communities and find that bumping it out a year and having that roll on in '30, but ultimately, Mr. Chair, what you're describing is a very similar path to our other communities.
Correct.
This is a debt exclusion topic, without a doubt.
Yeah. And that's, and that's the one thing I just want to make abundantly clear to the people, that if you come out to vote on, whichever way you vote, on January 25th, there're basically two subsequent votes to that, if the answer is yes on January 25th, that have to pass as well. So with that said, there's been plenty of information out there. If you need additional information, that, you know, clearly, it's on our website, it's been pushed out, as, watch the CAM programs with the town manager and the superintendent. You know, from a technical aspect, I think we've, we've got the information, and you know, just want to inform people what the process is.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, pardon me, next item on the agenda, JD Variety. Is somebody here from JD Variety? This is a, it's not a public hearing, it's a hearing held in public, there's a difference. You've got a notice to show cause on your all-alcoholic package store license. What I'm going to have to do is swear you in. I mean, that's part of the process. So we're going to start with that. I'm going to explain to the board that we will, once we're sworn in, we'll open the hearing, we'll let him make his presentation, we will then either close the hearing or continue it. If we close the hearing, then we make a determination whether there's a violation, and if there is a violation, then we move to the next phase, which is the punishment phase. This is not public participation, the public has a right to watch, but they don't have a right to participate because it's a license and it affects your business. So is there anybody from the town, Mr. Manager, that's going to be testifying in this matter? Okay. So what I want you to do is raise your right hand, and acting in my capacity as a justice of the Peace Forum within the Commonwealth, I now do ask you, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do, thank you. Let the record reflect, the witnesses have been sworn. Could you kindly identify yourself?
My name is Harsh Patel.
Yeah. And you're here as a result of a notice to show cause on issues relating to your business at 201 North Quincy Street.
Yes.
Could you tell us from your standpoint, have they been rectified?
The portions that we could control have been rectified. Today, I came in just to talk to the building department about what was left, and it's stuff outside the property, which is the landlord's responsibility.
Okay.
I've talked to the landlord, and he has told me that he's been in contact with the building department. I'm not sure how far the communications have gone or what's been agreed upon, but it's basically just the chimney area outside that it's, needs, I guess, some repair or removal.
Is that the chimney that they had, was it falling down, or the exhaust was going into the building?
So the chimney's not active. When I talked to the landlord today, he told me for the last 10 years, the building hasn't been using the chimneys because it's been converted from oil to just not using oil anymore.
Okay.
So I think it's just the state of the chimneys that need help. There's no exhaust coming into the buildings or anything.
Okay, so this is your landlord. You've complied so far, and it's a question of your landlord.
Yes.
Okay. What I would suggest to the members of the board is that in that, we can't approve a license for a building that if it's not publicly safe, that's number one. So what I am going to suggest, unless there are any questions, is that we continue the hearing and get a further update on an action plan from the building department and the owner. Who's the owner, is it?
Jerry Glasgow, I believe his last name is. First name's Jerry, last name, I gotta double check.
Ned Gulston from Stoughton? Jerry Gulston?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I would have to double check, though.
That's fine. Does any member of the board have any questions?
I'll make a motion. We continue to the next meeting.
Continue this matter to January 27th, at which point we'll have a report from the building department and as to what the situation is with the owner, and then that way, you know, you're not affected. But just understand, we can't approve a license for a building that if it's, if there's public safety deficiencies.
Yeah, I've been putting pressure on my end as a tenant, but I just don't have the power to do anything outside the...
I understand. Okay. Question comes, postponing, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
He can still operate while we push.
Correct.
Okay, just checking.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or voted, it's continued. You'll be back up here on the 27th, but we'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much. Next item on the agenda, Habitat for Humanity Grant Agreement, 871 Plummer Street. We have the Socio Habitat for Humanity Grant Agreement, a formal agreement for the matter at 871 Plummer Street, where we've discussed before, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or voted, kindly sign that on the way down. The minutes of December 9th, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Number four, Request for Appointment, Conservation Commission. We have Amanda Conley, Joanne, Demick Harding, and Elvin Schneider. Are any of those candidates present? One, two, two? Okay, please, if you could just come up and identify yourself, please.
Hi.
Name and address, yeah.
Amanda Conley, 149 Gene Carroll Road.
Okay. Amanda, could you just give us just briefly your background and the reasons you want to go on the Conservation Commission?
So I really want to learn more about the town and like our wetlands and all that comes with it. I recently took the, what's it called, the Fundamentals for Conservation Commissioners Certificate Program, and it's just, I find it very interesting, and I'd really like to make a bigger impact in the community.
Okay, great. Very good. Any questions from members of the board for Amanda? If not, thanks very much. I take it you're Elvin?
Yes.
Yes, just identify yourself and send questions.
Alvin Schneider, 66 Progress Street. I'm looking to get involved with the town. My background is within construction and architecture. I have a lot of experience within reading prints and working within wetlands and conservation. I have a lot of familiarity with it, and I want to get involved within the town, since I now live within the area for a few years now, and I figured this would be a good place to go. I enjoy the outdoors, and I want to see what we have for native wetlands and wildlife, everything within our community preserved and not destroyed.
Okay. Very good. Questions from the board for Elvin? If not, very good, thanks very much. First vote comes on appointment for a member of the Conservation Commission, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Alvin Schneider as a voting member.
Is there a second?
Just a second.
Motion made and seconded, any other motions? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Schneider kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Congratulations, and thanks.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thanks for volunteering. Community Preservation Committee, Jeffrey...
Wait, sorry, wait, is there one voting and one associate? So...
So you have to vote for an associate between Amanda and Joanne.
Joanne. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Amanda Conley as an associate to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded for associate member, discussion?
I have to say, like, I appreciate everybody who volunteers and puts yourself out there. But associates in my, and I stand by this, when I was director and we had associates on our boards, it never really worked out. It was, they couldn't vote when one of the voting members wasn't, was absent from the board, they couldn't really vote. So I'm not a great fan of having associate members unless somebody is moving forward in the next, you know, couple of months there, retiring out. That is just my opinion, just wanted to put it out there.
And I'll say this, being on conservation for the past four years, that there's been a lot, especially the last year and a half, there's been a lot of turnover, me included. So it's good to have somebody because there's a lot to learn, especially Amanda, if you've taken the MACC classes, you'll know that. So I think, I can't speak for the other boards and commissions, but conservation, having somebody lined up that if somebody, you know, resigns, leaves, moves on, having somebody that's learning and has the experience that can fill that role and take the voting seat, I think it's, for this board at least, is very helpful.
Okay, anything further? If not, a motion made for Amanda Conley for associate. All those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I am going to, I kind of agree with Suzanne. I think associates, I'm going to vote no on this matter. So two to three. The Community Preservation Committee, Jeffrey Carter, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Commission on Disabilities, Joss Del Fiskovo, I believe, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Item number five, Vote to Endorse Lip Application for 161 North Quincy Street Development, the town manager. So I presented this information to you, I think it was at our meeting at town meeting. This is a proposal up on North Quincy Street, 161 North Quincy Street. Two buildings, and it abuts that property that is open lot storage, a large open lot storage area. Total of 249 units. This would be a very, probably a very good opportunity for some development in that area. As you know, it's up on, right on the Brockton line. The proposal looks nice. What this would do by the Board of Selectmen endorsing the lip application, this just allows them to file with the state in more of a expedited manner. They still have to go through all of the same 40B processes within the town. This, I would recommend though, and I would ask that if you do vote this, this is, I would say the vote should be contingent upon them having a successful intermunicipal agreement with Brockton regarding water and sewer services. Okay. Questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
To approve contingent upon...
Yes.
An agreement with the city of Brockton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Establish a gift account pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 6.
Skip the big one.
Oh! Sorry. Sorry, that was unintentional. Discussion and vote on the...
They have the Stanley cups right in front of them.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm staring at the Stanley cup. Discussion and vote on the Abington Street Hockey Courts at Arnold Park, the town manager...
Can I jump in first?
Sure.
I'm the one who asked to put this on, just so everybody knows. I came here in April and got elected. My understanding was the courts were being built behind here on Glenowits Way. I was having breakfast at Martin's, and someone said, oh, they're building hockey rinks over at Arnold Park. So first, so everybody understands, I'm 1,000% for hockey rinks. In case you don't know, even though I'm short and fat, I played street hockey for well into my 40s. Used to play every Sunday until I got my knees replaced. So I'm not against hockey, actually going to the Bruins tomorrow night. So that being said, because I'm hearing feedback that I'm against street hockey, which is absurd, my understanding was it was going over here. I didn't know it got changed to Arnold Park. Our board can't vote on Arnold Park, so everyone knows that, that's Park and Rec. But I wanted, I don't know what the thought process was where it got moved up there. Didn't know anything about it, didn't know if there was a vote, a committee, didn't know any of that. So that's why we're here. This isn't an anti-hockey thing. So I'm saying that to you in front of everybody. I got a couple of calls today from people asking me about it, and I explained it. I want to say this, so there's no misunderstanding. Personally, I think over here is a better spot than Arnold Park, but I am 100%, 1,000% for hockey and two street hockey rinks, courts, whatever they're called now. So that being said, that's why it's on the agenda. It's not a vote by us tonight. So I just want to lay that out there, because sometimes things seem to get, there seems to be a misunderstanding, other than somebody just saying what's going on, so everybody knows it from the horse's mouth. So that's why we're here.
Okay, the town manager, please.
All right, just for some of the background on this, it was, I guess, many months ago now that I did have a meeting, and I asked some stakeholders to come and join me in the meeting. I think President Addit, we had Peter Sorino, our athletic director, Brian Woodford was there, we had Alex Bezanson, Sean Riley, John Stone from DPW, Kelly Johnson of Park and Rec, and it was probably one or two other folks that were there. And basically, I brought them in to discuss, my first reasoning was because at the end of Glenowits Way, I do have an earmark that we were lucky enough to get for the design of a multi-use outdoor sports area. And I do, I did know at the time that, you know, we were in the process of doing some work over at Memorial Field, quite an extensive project at Memorial Field, and I've had several people asking me for different athletic activities, such as the street hockey. We have a need to replace the basketball courts over at the police station campus, because as we're doing that, the new project over there, those are going to come down really soon. So keeping all of these things in mind, I wanted to get everybody together to try and get on the same page and look at what our options are. And, you know, we, again, like I said, we were looking at Glenowits Way, Memorial Field, Arnold Park, and we even brought up Green Street as far as there is a proposal to do some pickleball courts there. Pickleball courts, I think we all kind of decided if we were going to do anything with them, something would probably be best down at Memorial Field where it wouldn't bother anybody. They do seem to be a bit loud. But also knowing that, again, like I have the earmark, and we have some, the Bruins Foundation that has pledged up to $50,000 to build a street hockey court. So when we had the meeting, that was my proposal, was like, what can we do with Glenowits? Can we put the street hockey court here? Can we add some basketball? Pete Sorino had mentioned that it would be nice to see a beach volleyball court up there. I do know that they've had those in some other towns. We have it in Whitman Hansen, and it does seem like it's pretty popular. So my thought was to come to this board at some point, and I certainly should have done it sooner, but it, you know, we did get into sort of special town meeting mode, made a conscious decision to start our budget season early, so this really got pushed off to the side of my desk. But other folks, I think, you know, as we met, other folks did like the Arnold Park spot better, specifically the street hockey group and association, they felt that that was a better spot for... the street hockey group and association. They felt that that was a better spot for them. My intention all along was to bring this back to the board, to this board, because I do need your approval before I do anything on Glenowits. It's an empty parcel that has no use on it right now. So before we establish something there, I do need your permission to go forward. I would still like to see something out there. I certainly want to see basketball out there. I'd like to see the beach volleyball, and if it was up to me, I'd like to design the street hockey out there now, too. But again, you know, it's up to this board to make those decisions, and certainly I'd like to move forward with that earmark, get some sort of a proposal put together that I can then bring in front of this board. We can, again, involve Park and Rec in it, because eventually they're going to be the ones responsible for it, and any other entity that, you know, wants to chime in on it.
Yeah. Pardon me, I think, from my perspective, obviously, this predates me on the board. The one thing I'm going to say, I thought, watching the meetings prior to, that the question was going to come on Glenowits Way as far as developing something up there, no matter what it was. But the one thing that I do want to say, as far as Arnold Park goes, I was a park commissioner many years ago, and hence the reason when I mentioned about the town reports, how important they were, because I went back into some of them today to see if I could find. My memory serves me, when I was a park commissioner, that that park was donated by Abby Arnold. Now Abby Arnold was the daughter of Moses Arnold, who owned the factory that's there. When she donated the land to the town, there was a condition, as I remember it, and I can't find the town meeting vote or the will, that predicated that we could not build structures on Arnold Park. And I remember it distinctly because I was a park commissioner when Proposition Two and a Half went in, and we were looking to be innovative, because our department was decimated. And she had left a bequest, and we wanted to access that money in order to build something at Arnold Park, and we were told at the time we couldn't do it because the terms of the will prevented it. I'm going from memory, and that was a long time ago, and I could not, I dove back into the town reports this afternoon to see if I could find it. I could only find in 1956, she donated a park at Adams and Washington that's called Johnson's Corner in memory of her mother. I couldn't find Arnold Park. I know, I've seen the will, I can't put my hands on it, but I think we've got to research that. I don't know the definition of a structure. I don't know, you know, we were always told back then, and that was many years ago, we couldn't put a fence around it because that violated the terms of the will. Again, that was then, this is now. I'm sure there's been court challenges and court opinions that may differ on the term of what a structure is, but I think at the very least, we've got to look at the terms of the will to make a determination what authority it has. I'm pretty certain that the land was given under the custody of the park commissioners. So I think, as far as the Board of Selectmen's concerned, I don't think our general superintendency powers extend to Arnold Park. But again, I think that's something we have to research. The question before us right now is to look at Glenowits Way in terms of developing that and coming back with some sort of a plan that we can all discuss, in concert with the athletic director, and he had, as you had mentioned, had mentioned things. My concern right now is we're losing two basketball courts at the police station, and they've got to go someplace. So we had always thought, I thought, we were going to put them over here along with an expanded facility. So, with that said, I think it behooves us to direct the town manager to come back with a plan as it relates to Glenowits Way and further investigate, based on what I just said, the terms of the will, if we can find it, I imagine, I don't know if it's on file. Clearly, it's in probate court. I mean, we'd have to do some research on that. But it may in fact be on file with the town clerk, just to see what those terms are, and you may have to get a legal opinion as to what it says. It may very well be that you could build a rink there. It may very well be that a rink is not a structure. I don't know that as I'm sitting here. But I just wanted to alert everybody to that fact, that this does exist, it was given back in time, and there were certain conditions put when it was accepted. So I think we've got to look at that a little bit more finitely.
So I'd like, my only concern with that is, one, there's already playground, there's already a small basketball court, you know, a structure, if you're looking at, you know, CPC guidelines, you have, you know, they could do work on Memorial Field, but they can't do a structure such as a locker room or a stadium. So I think, you know, there is a precedent there. This has been something that's been going on for three years now. You know, Glenowits was potentially an option, and then it got pushed back. Memorial Field was potentially an option, and it got pushed back. And I think both can be done. I think we can have something at Glenowits. I don't want to see this particular project stopped because now we want to add more things to it. You know, I, if we can't build a hockey rink and basketball courts that would be open to anybody and not locked because someone donated land years ago, that frustrates me, because this is something that we need. We need more recreation, and we need more opportunities for the children of this town that, you know, we're just maxing out at. I would recommend that if we want to do something at Glenowits Way, we have the earmark to make a design, that's great. If we get to include, you know, I know pickleball court is a new thing, great, whatever. But we can do something there while also having Arnold Park move forward. I trust Parks and Rec, I trust DPW, I trust the CPC. Disclaimer, I was on CPC for a while, and that's why I know that we've been working on this for a long time. I don't want this to get stalled where we can't bring it to the town meeting in April and make them wait another year. That's, you know, now these kids are aging out of this. So, that's my opinion.
Well, I think we have to, I, listen, I'm not a lawyer, you know, I can't tell you what is a structure or it isn't a structure-
I say we go forward with it and see what happens. The worst they say is no, and now we've got an earmark for Glenowits. Great, let's move forward. I don't want this stopped because somebody's will somewhere along the way said we can't build on it, but we have built on it.
Well, we have an obligation to look into it.
Yeah, but I, we can look into it, but I recommend that we do the earmarks so we can build a design for an outdoor sports area on Glenowits, if down the line that has to include a street hockey court, because we can't build an Arnold Park, great, but I think Arnold Park should not, and I, yes.
Make it as a motion, I'll second it.
Motion as stated.
I'm not looking to hinder the rink, believe me.
Yeah, I'm, yep, I want to make sure that this moves forward as best as we can.
I just wanted to go on the best spot we can do.
Exactly.
And I'm looking to do a couple-
We have all these hap, exactly.
Is there a timeline-
That was going to be my question, is there a deadline?
-for the funding from the Bruins alumni?
I feel like-
Alex Bezanson. Do you have the checkbook?
Because otherwise I can't even-
I apologize for my voice. I lost it over the weekend. I don't know where it is. But I had asked Bob Sweeney a few years ago for this money, and like you said, we've been delayed, delayed. They have committed for 2025. Beyond that, I don't know. I think we'd still be able to get it, but we've delayed, I've delayed it with him several times over the years. And I personally don't care where it goes, but I think it should be done this year, because I don't want to take the chance of losing the money.
Yeah, and I understand we need to do it because we're losing where they play.
And just so you know, if anyone can understand me, those Bruins license plates that you see out there, that's what funds this. And the Bruins Foundation have done, they've done rinks in Wamouth, Hanover, Quincy, Charlestown, all over the state. And we're lucky enough to be next on the list with $50,000, so.
Okay. I made a motion, Mr. Wood seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, if I can just speak for a few minutes to any issue.
Sure. Just identify yourself for the people.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Lamb, I am Brian Woodford, 24 Harriet Road, and I have a law firm in Abington, 808 Washington Street. And, you know, I, you know, the past few days have been a little bit of whirlwind, but never at any point did I think that the town or the board didn't support hockey rinks in town. The location is super important to me and those who support me. You know, so, you know, between playing and coaching at Abington, I have dedicated, you know, 13 years of my life to the program and intend to coach here, you know, as long as I can physically coach, given blood, sweat and tears, by most accounts, good guidance to the boys and girls, and have lost a fair amount of revenue, time with my family and beautiful blonde hair to this program. The program was started in 71, and it has a tremendous amount of talent and pride throughout the years, and Roger Ulystup for the squad back in the day, you know, and we got support from John Cashman in the room, who owns the Rockland Rink, Anthony Sumati, former coach, player for the program, and many other alumni are behind this and the location, more importantly. You know, despite all the pride we've had, you know, it's been very difficult fielding a hockey team from the get-go. You know, every year, we have struggled to put numbers together, you know, and even my year, senior year, 2000, the program didn't even have enough kids where we were going to fold until the last 12th hour waiver, we got to co-op with East Bridgewater. So things have been pretty dire, and even this year, I've got an amazing group of kids, but we are extremely thin, so much over the offseason where I have nerves as to, a couple of kids decide they don't want to play hockey, we don't even have a program. And the crux of the matter is, is that, you know, we've got, in town, we've got six to seven baseball fields, two softball fields, six outdoor basketball hoops, eight indoor basketball courts, three football fields, six soccer fields, six pickleball courts, but zero facilities of any kind for hockey. And with that, it's difficult to grow the game. And I know the town supports it, so I'm not here pointing fingers, because everybody is behind this, and I feel I have tremendous amount of support to help grow this, you know. You know, so in 2020, that's when my friend Jonathan Waters, 93 Ashland Street, and I took matters into our own hands and started the Abington Street Hockey League at the police station courts. Just like me, he's invested time and money, but not his hair, into the league, for the benefits of the community. And it was received well beyond our imagination, and things have gotten great, you know, and I know there's some people here who may share their experience, where it has translated people who may have never played hockey into hockey players. And it may be 10 years down the road that I see these results, but it is happening. And that's the point of my discussion why I have here, because one of the main reasons the league has been successful, and it's not necessarily just because of a place to play, because those courts are, you know, old, they've got grass around them, the net, the fence at the bottom is curled up, so the ball goes underneath it, but it's more the atmosphere of the environment that kind of surrounds it. And you're not, you know, as you know, we're not here looking just for anything shiny and new for town, because we would have been happy playing there until things came into play. It's just the courts, our courts are getting torn up. For a fire station in DPW that we as a league support and is good for the town. So, we have, I've put many, like Amanda said, is that I've put a many amount of hours over many years into thinking about this, where it should go, Memorial Field, Glenowits, Arnold's, countless hours of just thinking every kind of angle through. So I'll just quickly go through a few of the reasons why I think Glenowits is not adequate for this project, and why a park like Arnold's, and, you know, again, I get the legalist with the covenants and conditions in the will, and certainly there are structures, as was pointed out before, already built there. So I think with the structures that are already built there, we can finagle our structure to be similar from a legal standpoint as those structures that already exist there. So we've got the support of the Abington DPW and Parks and Rec. I think John Stone may have sent a letter to the board. If not, I can forward it after the meeting on his support for the project. On Wednesday evenings, this is going to bring a significant amount of people into an economic area that deserves the business in Abington. I've spoken with the owners of the depot, and I'm sure as if I go around and had more time to speak to different business owners, that they would be as elated as the O'Conners who own the depot, who were bringing in some business on an otherwise slow night. And in addition, the, it's a twofold benefit there, whereas down at the police station, we typically have to bring food trucks in. Families are rushing for meals and coming to street hockey straight from wherever they are, and we have food trucks down there that are sometimes prohibitive or not available. And that's where this area provides many options for the depot, A-HOP, the Cellar, Lynch's, you know, Old Town, to be able to get food within walking distance. So there's benefits to our families who are on the run. You know, the league has to provide a porta potty. You know, we were going to the bathroom at the police station with the very generous to opening up their bathroom to us. And we would need a porta potty, and there's already one down there for baseball, and we may have to add a second one. But to kind of come down Glenowits Way, and you need to be able to access this porta potty, porta potty with a truck, it would almost need to be somewhat visual. And that's kind of one of the things you wouldn't want as people come onto our beautiful campus, as they first drive in and get an impression of that nature. Arnold Park needs revitalization. I grew up playing hoops in Arnold Park, almost to the point that nobody played hockey in town, and I almost played basketball. Luckily, I didn't, and we're here now, but to be honest, I don't see too many games getting run there these days. And, you know, I also believe that my wife Brooke and Kelly from Parks and Rec have discussed maybe team backup, who did, they helped together with others in the playground. It'd be Brooke to fix that component of this project that needs revitalization also with the playground there. So, and we fully intend to keep that as a basketball, because this is, again, a basketball town, too, as much as it is hockey, that they need places to play. Those courts are getting torn up, so this will be an improvement to not just the hockey in town, but a nice new basketball area with benches and adequate space to be able to play basketball, too, down there. There are occasions where parents can't get to street hockey because they've got a kid playing baseball, and if there's, you know, different nights, they may be able to be in two spots at once, and we will certainly coordinate with baseball to make the flow down at the park as conducive possible for everybody, parking and everything needed. We need two courts. In order to be, and that's where, before I moved to Abington, I played, I grew up in Dorchester, and we didn't have fancy courts or anything. We literally played on a tennis court, either in a main busy one-way, moving the nets, or there was a tennis court in the area that I never saw tennis nets on, but we played. You know, so I go around to some of these other towns and see big rinks, and they don't necessarily get used, because a little five-year-old isn't running 200 feet up and down to get a goal. These small condensed spaces provide us to be able to service the 160, 180 kids that we have on a given Wednesday night with multiple games in small areas. It allows grandma to sit down on a lawn chair and look in and watch, as opposed to being able to stand overboard. So the environment of having two smaller courts, I think is unique and will be unique to our town, to provide something that's, by all accounts, well-received of an environment. We need lights, and in some discussions with electricians and figuring out, it's much easier to provide lighting at Arnold Park than it would be necessarily at, and I'm not an electrician, so I don't know fully the complexity of it, but provide lights at the Glenowits Way. And lastly, I know with building of the school, that there's some complexities with the neighbors, and that's in both situations, Arnold Park and Glenowits Way. But I know the neighbors were very hesitant on certain things that you could do up there with lights, and times you can play games, and the property up at Glenowits directly is pretty close to the condominium complex, where it would share a lot of space. And just like this meeting, before every single game we've ever had at the Abington Street Hockey League, we've done the National Anthem. Well, we did pledge allegiance, but we do the National Anthem and we play some music. So there's a little bit of an environment that would be more conducive down to a economic area, as opposed to that close to a highly dense residential area. So, in conclusion, I, you know, again, appreciate all the support from everybody who's come, and the Bruins Foundation, everybody who's behind this project, and even the board, who I know is supportive of hockey in town. But I just ask that you do, oh, and one last thing is, I support up at Glenowits Way, basketball courts, volleyball courts, making a nice, and, you know, and athletic director Sorino and I are fully on the same page. With that, it needs to be an area that is more suitable for high school age students, who aren't going to be bringing street hockey sticks to school to go play after. to be bringing street hockey sticks to school to go play after. But yeah, they can bring a basketball or a volleyball and, you know, meander on from the campus onto there. So we're fully in support of recreational development of that land and it will look beautiful one day. I just ask that this board do not vote down Arnold's Park for street hockey, even if it's within your purview, or, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I think clearly our direction will be for the town manager to work with the different groups and come back to us with a plan.
Yeah.
You know, clearly, I appreciate, you know, your comments and I understand them and certainly we do, as you indicated, support hockey ring, you know, from that standpoint, but I think he has to vet out everything and he'll be working with you from that standpoint.
Thank you all for your time and I'll just leave you with this. This is just a kind of a printout of the detailed application we put in with the Community Preservation Act.
Thank you.
With just our plans and some costs and they still need some time to, we'll be working with them on it. And it includes just that, you know, unsolicited prior to I knew this meeting was being held, I was reached out by a young family in town looking, because everybody who wins the cup gets a day with the cup or a week with the cup. So we've included some pictures and a message from the family of just how it translated from street hockey and now they're playing for the South Shore Eagles and it's kind of the vibes going on with the Abington Street Hockey. So I appreciate all your time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Motion made and has been seconded. All those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
Well, stick around for some really exciting stuff.
Yeah. Establish a gift account pursuant to the provisions of Mass General法 up to forty-four, section fifty-three A and a half of the purposes.
Ryan, should start a senior league.
Of receiving donations to fund the retiree appreciation account. Nobody's listening to me.
We are, yes.
I guess the motion is hard.
All right. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, kindly signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted. Number eight, the town managers report and outline of the FY twenty-six budget process.
We're doing the budget. Anybody want to sit down?
Go ahead.
All right. I will, you have the budget sheet, I handed out to you tonight. The last page is our current state of our budget. To describe the process, we start off, and we did start off early this year, and we asked the departments for requests, you know, put, fill in your budget, look at what you did last year and tell us what you need to continue to provide the services that you're providing, and if there's anything that you're not doing that should be done, make sure you put that in there. And then the next thing is there's analysis that's done by my office in conjunction with the finance director, we make some edits and some comments, and then we all meet with the finance committee. At that point, each department head makes a presentation to the finance committee. Finance committee reviews the drafts, they'll make some recommendations, depending on where we are in the budget, it gets tweaked quite a bit, and eventually this all gets down to town meeting. This year's been very difficult and it's been quite a collaborative effort. Members of this board have sat in with me and I want to, you know, thank Jim and Donovan and Mr. Woods and Mr. Justburg for sitting in on, there's been multiple committees, people from the school department, finance committee, and different working groups continue to look at this budget and continue to massage the budget. Some of the big drivers that we have that are causing issues here are waste hauling, waste hauling costs. They continue to be a big burden on the budget. The year-to-year increases outpace inflation, the continued rising of this cost is eroding from other parts of the budget and other departments. We do expect this trend to continue, unfortunately. Recycling no longer helps to offset the cost, landfills are nearing capacity, so this is a situation that's, we're expecting to get worse. We are proposing to transition these expenses into an enterprise fund. We'll talk a little bit more about that and there'll be actually quite a bit more discussion on that going forward. Health insurance costs are another big driver this year particularly, but that's up, over twelve percent increase expected this year. Now, we've been working closely with the town employees, the retirees, and trying to find ways to reduce those expenses, whether it's through different plans, we're actually looking and meeting with other groups, including Maya and Mayflower, to price out what those costs would be if we were to switch from Mass Strategic Health Group. And just in generally inflation, obviously, we're subject to the effects of inflation like everyone else is, and there's been, you know, increased costs for gas, goods and services, electricity, and all of this continues to exasperate our financial issues. Revenue and state aid, currently, you know, we're facing a one-point-six million dollar deficit. We are holding flat on our future revenues, including our state aid is expected to remain flat. Chapter seventy is our state aid that is allocated mostly to the schools, and then there's unrestricted general government aid, which is basically general fund aid. We don't anticipate an increase right now on either of those. The state is having a hard time meeting their own projections, they continue to drop their revenue projections and they still don't meet their benchmarks, so we're not expecting any help to come on that horizon. So we do have some proposed solutions. Obviously, we've talked quickly about transitioning our waste hauling into an enterprise fund. And by doing this, we're still going to have a deficit right now, but we do propose to move about a million six into an enterprise fund in establishing waste hauling outside of the general fund and outside of the general tax base. We would, if this goes forward, our proposal is something that we would phase in, it would be over probably a four-year period, we would use free cash to offset the cost a hundred percent in the first year, so there'd be no additional expense to the homeowners, and it'd be a way by subsidizing this, recognizing that in the past there have actually been two overrides to help fund waste hauling in the past. Those overrides were a total of maybe eight-hundred thousand dollars and fifteen-plus years ago, and just unfortunately, they no longer are helping whatsoever. But we do recognize that that was done and we recognize that, you know, we're asking a lot of the community, but we're probably one of the only communities in the area that hasn't done this, and most communities have done it many years ago. So we will put together a proposal for that, we will have some public input sessions on that. We want to work with the community and the stakeholders and make sure that everybody understands that this is something that needs to be done one way or the other, it just continues again, like I said, to erode at the budget. So that being said, we are at a level service budget, which means that we're just prioritizing our essential services and basically saying we have to meet our contractual obligations. We're not looking to add any services or any positions for shore to the budget this year. Again, our next steps will be public engagement specifically on the waste hauling, but there will be, we're in that process right now where the finance committee meets every Wednesday night, department heads come in and they present their budget. We will have budget hearings with this group, with some of our larger budget, you know, the Department of Public Works, the police and fire for shore, will all come in here and present their budgets to you. Again, we'll have more talk and engagement on waste hauling. Right now, we're sort of at a wait-and-see. The governor and the House will submit the state budget in approximately two weeks, and that'll give us an idea of where that chapter seventy school aid's going to come in and where our unrestricted government aid. And depending on where that does come in, then we'll start making more decisions from that.
I think, yeah, I think to spiral off on what Scott's saying, we've broken out into groups, we meet the superintendent of schools, chairman of the finance committee, member of the finance committee, the finance team, I've been involved in them, Roger, and to the point where I think the finance staff is sick and tired of me.
Oh, no.
Yeah. I've, I wanted to go over the revenue figures, we've scrubbed those, I've looked at the free cash figure, we've taken a concentrated effort to look at selling off a lot of parcels from tax title. We did an auction the other day, we've got another one coming up to try and get any blessed dime we can get our hands on. As it relates to the health insurance, I had said to the town manager, and it predates all of us, including him, I think the biggest mistake the town of Abington made, and I wasn't on the board at the time, when they went out of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. I founded the group and it's not because of that, but it expanded in such a way that we have different counties and districts involved in it. We established the reserve fund and the health reinsurance so that we were able to have minimal increases and we subsidized the rate. So the Mayflower increase on a yearly basis is not the twelve, it was down to like three and four percent versus the thirteen percent that we're seeing now. So in, the group had expanded in such a way that with more people, the experience was spread out among everybody, and I just can't state that enough. I think it was the biggest mistake Abington ever made, but that's history and we got to move forward. So I wanted him to look at Mayflower, to make a determination if it makes more sense from a group insurance standpoint, to be able to save that. The other thing, you know, in terms of where we stand, we don't know, we've been looking at the state revenues and tracking those, they're not tracking as what has been predicted, so we don't know what the governor's going to file in House One. And until that happens, we're not going to be able to gel together the town budget. So I just want everybody out there in TV land to understand that we are on it, we've turning every stone that we can possibly turn to ensure by the time we get to town meeting, we're going to have a plan for you to consider and be able to stand before you and say, we've looked at every blessed thing that we can look at and this is where we stand at that point. We've still got a lot of work to do, but this is just the kickoff provision from there. Any other questions from the members of the board for the town manager?
I mean, health insurance costs have been rising for, I was fighting this twelve years ago in startups, so loves Taylor goes, but also the waste management, it's, has to be done.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It's farther away, we're making more waste, the single stream, we're not able to say it, like, there's so many factors that go into it, I don't think people realize, you know, just because your bin's not that empty doesn't, there's sixteen thousand other people in this town that, and not just us, every, like you said, every other town's dealing with it, so.
Next item on the agenda, to set the deadline for submission of articles for the annual town meeting for February tenth, is the remotion.
Motion to approve the date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed unanimous. We're going to go into executive session pursuant to the provisions of Mass General 法 up to thirty-eight, section twenty-one, three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining to wit the International Association of Firefighters, Local Two-O-Ito. We will return, so I would ask everybody just to take a break and we will go in and we will be back out. So is there a motion?
Motion to go into executive session to reconvene.
To reconvene, as I've stated, roll call, vote, Amanda?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
I vote yes. We will be back. Also, we're reconvening from executive session relating to the firefighters' contract. The town and Local Two-O-Ito, which is the firefighters, have negotiated in good faith and have come to an agreement that has, was ratified by the union this past Thursday, and it provides essentially for a successor agreement for three years. Initially, the terms of the agreement are such that it's a first year two percent, second year two and a half percent, third year two-point-nine percent raise, there are increases for stipends and educational. The thing that I want to make abundantly clear, and I've made, discussed this with the board, is that we have a very good team and it's, the paramedic industry now is being very, it's very tough to recruit and retain. So we have to be competitive in that market, and I feel, you know, clearly that we, on both sides of the issue, it was a very fair process, it was something that, no, not everybody got what they wanted on each side of the issue, but that's what negotiation is all about. And at the end of the day, I'm satisfied that this is in the best interest of the town and clearly the union feels it's in their best interest because they've ratified it. So with that said, question comes on ratification of the agreement with, by and between the town and Abington Firefighters, Local Two-O-Ito, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in the second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous, we have ratified the agreement, it'll be part, the town manager now will fold the increases into part of the fire department budget for consideration at town meeting, and if we could have the union come up to sign three copies, and then we will sign three copies, and then we'll call it a night.
Kevin, weren't we on the board when we started the paramedic program?
We were, and actually the first paramedic is sitting right over there.
Back in early eighteen hundreds, as I recall?
Yeah, and he looks as young as he did back then, too. He didn't have, he had a mustache back then, yeah.
Yes, he did.
Weep, bloodletting?
Be nice.
Yeah. He'd just come in from Florida, as I recall.
They called him firefighter Suave Bowler, as I recall.
When they replay this later, we're going to have them put pictures of you back thirty years ago, chief.
Yeah. Oh, I think I had one, actually.
Pictures of you back.
I was much taller then.
Michael? Who else? Justin. Josh and Justin. All right, very good, Chris. Don't go anywhere. We got to sign it first.
You have to congratulate them.
You don't want to, you don't want to, with all your coffee. We got to sign it.
Change our minds.
Whatever. Stick around, please.
Josh, can I have?
Jack, listen.
Wait, wait, I'll give you your coffee, Sam.
Very good.
You started off.